Next item is a public hearing. We're going to adopt a resolution authorizing the city to join the San Mateo County Peninsula Clean Energy Joint Powers Authority and appointing director and alternate to the JPA Board, hold a public hearing with first reading, introduce an ordinance authorizing implementation of a community choice aggregation program in San Bruno.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. The purpose of this item is to decide whether the city wishes to join a joint powers authority, that's a JPA, with the county of San Mateo and other peninsula cities that would offer residents an alternative way of purchasing electricity from providers other than PG&E. So with us tonight to represent the program is Supervisor David Pine. I'm sure he'd be happy to say a few words and answer any questions. And we also have available Jimmy Tan, who participated in the technical meetings that went on for quite a while with a former council member Salazar. So this is a complicated topic. There's a lot of materials in the packet. There's a lot of information out there available. I'm going to try to make it as simple as possible, and then please feel free to ask if you have any detailed questions. So the current situation right now, in brief, is that PG&E buys electricity and sells it to customers, to ratepayers. So what's different about this proposal? And what's different is it's the formation of an organization called a Community Choice Aggregation Program, or a CCA. Well, what would that do? Well, that organization would essentially buy electricity directly from suppliers on behalf of its member cities, and San Bruno could participate if they decide to do so tonight. And then that electricity is transmitted to customers using PG&E's electrical transmission system. Based on the information that staff has reviewed, the CCA could buy electricity from greener sources, reducing greenhouse gas emissions, and initially at a competitive cost to PG&E. Joining the joint powers authority then, in essence, would give the consumers and the residents of the city a choice to switch from PG&E to purchase energy from the joint power authority at competitive rates, but from greener sources of energy. So this report is going to cover really three basic topics. What was the background of the program? Talk a little bit about some of the benefits and concerns that have been raised about it, and then also talk about the next steps if the city wants to participate. So let's start with a bit of the background. Several years ago, the state legislature passed a law that authorized the formation of these CCAs, Community Choice Aggregation Programs. So Marin County was the first to form one of these entities, and it includes the cities in that county, but then over the last five years, a bunch of other entities have joined that CCA. So for example, that now includes Napa County, the city of Richmond, Benicia, San Pablo, and El Cerrito. So it's worked out well for Marin. Other cities have joined. Sonoma and Lancaster down south, the county of Sonoma in Lancaster, formed a CCA in 2015. And we have here in the Bay Area, Santa Clara and Alameda Counties also looking into doing this, all as a result of this state law that was passed that authorized counties and cities to do this. So let's talk about how would this work? In essence, the CCA would offer two options for customers. One that provides a minimum of about 35% renewable energy content scaling up to 50% in 2020. That's more than what PG&E currently provides. The second alternative that consumers would have would be to buy into a program or sign up for a program that provides 100% renewable electricity. So the county of San Mateo did a study, and that study found that rates for the first option, 35% scaling to 50, greenhouse gases and so on, would end up being very competitive with PG&E, about 4% lower initially, rates about 4% lower, and it would be a significant reduction in greenhouse gas emissions. Those results were validated recently by an independent study that the city of South San Francisco did in advance of their decision to join the entity. On the second alternative, which is if customers wanted to buy into the 100% renewable energy, that would cost about 2% more for the average consumer. So a little bit more, but then you're buying 100% renewable energy. So the question most people have is how would this program be implemented? And let's start with the city's role, and then we'll talk about the consumers' role, the residents' role. So first off, the city has to join the JPA if it wants to provide this alternative energy option to its customers. There is no cost to the city to join the JPA. There is no financial liability to the city from any obligations that the JPA enters into. So the agreement that you have in front of you tonight provides financial liability and resources only to the JPA, no liability to the city. It's possible that the city could exit the JPA if you decide to go along with it. You could exit from the program right before launch if the utility rate projections don't turn out to be what the consultants thought they were. So in a way, there's an off-ramp that allows the city, and allows all cities, to get out if things don't pan out with no financial obligation. If the city joins the JPA, then all of its residents are automatically enrolled in the CCA program unless they opt out. So they're automatically enrolled unless they opt out. And conversely, if you don't join, if the city doesn't join the JPA, then no residents can participate. So you have to join for residents to participate. The city could wait and decide to join later if they wanted to, but that might incur a cost to the city to do that, and that's also subject to the JPA's board approval. So that's on the city's side. Let's talk about the residents' side. So I mentioned earlier that the residents would automatically be enrolled in the program unless they opt out. So how are they going to know what to do? And the answer is that the CCA will provide up to four written notices over a period of 120 days to the residents saying, "Do you want to stay with PG&E," which you can do, "or do you want to opt out of this program?" So the choice is you're in the program unless you say, "I want to stay with PG&E." That's the choice. There is no cost to the resident, one way or the other. So if the resident says, "I want to opt out of the program. I don't like your energy alternatives. I want to stay with PG&E," they're free to do that, and there is no cost to them to make that decision. If the city council directs, the city itself could do some additional outreach. So for example, we could have an article in Focus Magazine. There could be something on cable TV, and we're open to any suggestions about how to address that. So if you're a resident and you've decided, "I like the green energy alternatives. I like the fact that at least initially it's going to be cost-competitive, less expensive. I'm going to go ahead and stay with the CCA." What if you change your mind later? Can you go back to PG&E? And the answer to that is yes, you can go back. You can go back to PG&E. However, if you do do that, the requirement is that you stay with them for a year. So in other words, they don't want people going back and forth, sort of what they do with, you know, cellphone bills, where one carrier says, "I'll give you a deal on your plan," and go back and forth, switch back and forth. So you have to stay with them for a year. One question that people have is what can a resident expect to see on their bill if the city does join this, the CCA? So the bill is still going to come from PG&E. It's going to look like a PG&E bill. There will be a line item on the bill that reflects the charge from the CCA for electricity that the customer's purchasing. The good news is that the program allows both city and the residents to continue using and maintains all of PG&E's special programs for low-income residents, energy efficiency, and all of those things. So there's no change to any of the delivery of services that PG&E provides the residents. One thing that some folks have pointed out is that recently the Public Utilities Commission adopted a charge to people who are looking to exit the system. In other words, people who decide, "We like the CCA alternative." There's going to be a charge on their bill for exiting the PG&E system because, of course, they're still using PG&E transmission lines and using their services. What is that charge going to be? So San Mateo County modeled, figured out, if that charge were to increase substantially over the next year or so, would the program still be cost-competitive? And the answer was yes. And that was validated by the South San Francisco city study that was also done. So the PUC increased the rate fairly substantially recently. That is still within the tolerance of the model. It's possible that they could increase it even more, and it would still be within the tolerance of the model that predicted competitive rates for the program. Let's talk just a second about what some of the benefits might be to the city of joining the program. Well, the first benefit is allows residents a choice. They can opt into the, or they can, they're already enrolled in the program if they'd like to be, or they can opt out. So they can select one of two renewable energy options, one of them which is cost-competitive, the other is really just slightly more. There's also the advantage of local control in that the JPA Board is populated, the board members are elected officials from the city council and from other cities and the county. One of the main benefits of the program is that it will help the city and the entire county meet its greenhouse gas emission goals for 2020, and that's important. It's a key feature in the city being able to do that. And as I mentioned before, there's no change in the delivery of power or the services. Let's talk very briefly about some of the concerns that were raised. One of them we've already talked about, the CPUC might allow PG&E to charge a higher exit fee. And we've talked about that already. I think that the studies have shown that it's still within the range that was modeled. However, there is risk in that the CPUC could increase fees even more than the model predicted. There could be other regulatory or legislative changes that might come through that might make the CCAs less attractive. Another risk is the fact that right now, the city's been told that power rates are at a very low level. So one advantage of forming this JPA now is they could go out and buy power at rates that are lower than PG&E contracts. Well, eventually, it's predicted, those costs for power are going to go up. What's going to happen then? The rates will go up, similarly as they might go up with PG&E. So therefore, there is risk that even though the customer might start at an initially lower rate, that rate could go up just as PG&E rates go up. So what happens if the city wants to join the JPA? What would the next steps be? And the first thing that you'll see on your agenda tonight is to adopt a resolution to join the JPA. The county has already approved that. A number of cities has. Perhaps Supervisor Pine can give us an update on that. And then you have to appoint a board member and an alternate to be on that JPA board. There's then a public hearing and adoption of an ordinance, first reading, or excuse me, introduction of an ordinance, first reading tonight. Why do we need an ordinance? It's because that's what's required by state law. State law says if you want to form one of these programs, you have to adopt an ordinance that says that. And for all that to happen before the end of the month, which is the other requirement, the introduction should occur this evening if you're going to, and then adoption at the next regular meeting. So that concludes my report. As I mentioned, Supervisor Pine is here. He may wish to make some comments. You may wish to ask questions, and we're available for any questions or comments, after which we'd recommend you open the public hearing and take any public comment. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Dave, and welcome.
Good evening, council. It's a pleasure to be here. First, let me compliment Mark on a very, very good summary of the program. I'd like to copy that. It was very well done.
He's been with us for five years.
Yeah. I have the pen to show it.
And I thank the staff, Jimmy Tan, Connie Jackson, also Michael Salazar, now Marty Medina, for his role on the advisory commission. So we appreciate your due diligence. I know the council has heard a lot about this, and just to kind of give you an update, we have 16 cities that have approved. We have two cities tonight, San Bruno and Milbrae, and South San Francisco and Colma tomorrow. So we're going for the grand slam. And I must say that, you know, I was confident we would have a lot of interest, but it exceeded expectations to have this level of interest, and I think it's because the model is compelling. Cleaner energy, competitive rates, customer choice, local control, and having PG&E as that kind of backstop in that kind of worst-case scenario. The benefits of joining now are, of course, we want someone from San Bruno on the board because we have to make a lot of decisions in this initial phase. Just one clarification, Mark, if I may. The default product will probably be closer to 50% clean out of the chute, going up from there. But that's one decision the JPA will have to form, have to decide. My personal preference is that it's be very important to make sure we have a buffer, you know, price-wise, that, you know, not push the green all the way to parity with, on price, with PG&E. I think it's very important that we launch at a low price and keep that price low into the foreseeable future. Two other just updates. The technical study, again, gives us a lot of confidence, but we had another study commissioned to check the technical study at the urging of the county manager in somewhat South City. So that has given us further confidence. So with that, I'm happy to address your questions, and again, I appreciate your, the time you've taken to dig into this.
Any questions for David this time?
Yes. Or Mark may want to field it too.
I'm going to go to the top here. Supervisor Pine, and thank you for the study session last time. And I voiced my concern is that. I think it's a great program, and I think it's very innovative for the cities and to be able to participate in this. What studies have you done for the public? My concern at the study session was that people are going to see these notices, and they're going to see county versus PG&E, and they're going to, they're not going to put it together. I also have a concern, what is it that the individual residents are getting? Because let's say Rico wants to be very energy-conscious and very environmentally sound, and he opts in, and maybe he does 100%. Myself, I'm a little skeptical or something, and I opt out totally, and I go, yeah, PG&E, let's, you know, I want my power from them. My bill is going to be different than his. Even on a rate scale, it's going to be different, whether he uses more electricity than I do. I mean, he's going to be charged different. So what, how are you, how is the city, how is the JPA going to determine the costs and all of this? Because his energy, his wire, he might live, and his wires are going to get the same energy that comes in. I'm going to get the same one. His isn't going to be any cleaner than mine. It's all purchasing. So what is it that the resident is really participating in? And what is the incentive for them?
So I think you've asked the two questions. One is about the public outreach and how do we make sure that, you know, our residents know what's happening? So the goal is to launch in October, and they'll be, we're in the process now of hiring a firm that will help us do extensive outreach. That's going to be really important, and there'll be substantial funds put against that in terms of mailing and radio, all kinds of public outreach. So, you know, people know this is coming. By laws, I think you've heard, you know, we have to provide these two notices prior to launch, making it really clear what people's choices are, and then we have to do it again two times after the launch. So, you know, we will have a very robust marketing and communication. Now, will everyone notice that? Probably, probably not. But when they get that first bill, and if they really study it, at first glance, it will look the same because it will say PG&E. But when they, if they really look carefully and they see a new entry, Peninsula Clean Energy Default Product at a lower price than they had before, you know, hopefully that won't cause them to concern. If it does, you know, they can opt out. You know, in terms of the, I think, you probably already know this, but just stated any event, stated again, you know, the clean energy we generate, you know, doesn't come directly to San Mateo County. Of course, it's electrons that are put on the grid. So when, you know, if Councilmember Medina chooses to have 100% option, and you want to stay with PG&E, I mean, the same group of electrons, you know, are flowing into the county, but because of our purchasing, the grid now has, the grid has more clean power. So if someone wants to compare it to like an ATM machine, like you put a $100 bill, you know, in an ATM machine, and then go across the bay, take the $100 bill out, you know, they're different $100 bills, but, so the electrons are, that are produced, obviously, are not somehow earmarked here, if that's, if that was the question you're asking. But again, the amount of clean energy on the grid is up substantially, and there's sophisticated ways for which, you know, the Peninsula Clean Energy kind of gets credit for that. And then on an annual basis, you know, you have to show the comparison to the, to the ratepayers, you know, what's the, what's the, what's the green portfolio of PG&E like compared to the green portfolio of Peninsula Clean Energy? What's the price of PG&E? What's the price of Peninsula Clean Energy? So that people, you know, can look at that every, every year. So I hope that helps address your question.
Any questions for Irene?
Thank you. There was mention of why it's advantageous to opt in now or join the JPA now, but what if things happen later and the city decides that this is not the best thing in the world? Are there penalties for leaving?
Yeah, there's, if the city joins at this point in this February timeframe like the other cities have, there's really two future opportunities potentially for the city to exit. First, again, to reiterate, I mean, customers always can leave, individual customers. But if the city, you know, had, wanted to, through council action, remove that, remove all the residents and kind of take that, take that position. First off, as the council spoke to, we're very confident in these models and in the technical study, but we need, you know, we can't, we need to go out to the marketplace this summer with our total load and find out how much green energy we can procure and at what price. And if for any reason we cannot deliver on our promise this summer of this 50% default product or something in that neighborhood, 50% green at a lower price under the, under the JPA agreement, at that juncture, the cities could say, "Wait a minute. This is not what we signed up for." Again, I think, and frankly, I wouldn't want to go forward either. I mean, we have to meet both goals, greener, competitive. So then, once we launch and say, whatever, a year, two years from now, there's, something happens that makes you feel that as a council, you want to exit. You can do that, but it's a little more complicated. You have to give some notice. If I remember, it's six months. And at that, at that point in time, we will have gone out and bought energy for the city of San Bruno. So there could potentially be, we may have to work out some kind of a wind-down period to try to recoup those costs, or, you know, perhaps the energy markets have shifted, so there, it wouldn't be a cost. But there, it wouldn't be, there would be, there'd be a cost, there may be a cost issues that need to be recouped because just like PG&E, we have to take care of PG&E through the exit fee. It might be necessary to, for San Bruno to, you know, make, make the Peninsula Clean Energy whole. I'm sorry if I'm real articulate on that, but.
No, I'm sorry. If I may through the chair.
Maybe you could, maybe you could clarify.
No, correct me if I'm wrong. If the, if the city does decide to exit sometime in the future, they could do that, and various things would need to happen. They'd lose their seat on the board, but the customers are still signed up for the program, right?
Well, it depends on, if you're talking about municipal accounts, I mean, that's simple.
Right.
And this hasn't happened to date in the history of CCA's, but if, again, two years from now, this council or another council said, you know, "We're just going to make a decision. We're going to pull all of our residents out. We're not, you know, we want out. We're going to make the decision for our residents." You know, at that time, there had to be some kind of unwinding process because we would have bought the energy for you.
Okay. And then I have just a, like a technical question. On page 48 of our report, it talks about having a representative from the council and an alternate, but it doesn't mention, and I'm bringing this up for a particular reason, it doesn't mention the alternate having the same responsibilities and voting privileges that the regular person does. And I'm bringing this up because in CCAG, the regular person, the regular delegate has voting, but the alternate does not. So I would suggest you add that part in here or have it specifically spelled out.
Yeah, I think, it's my understanding, and, you know, Mark, you probably have a perspective on this too, that the, that the alternate has full voting power if he or she attends in the, in the place of the, of the normal representative.
Yeah, that's correct.
That, well, that's what people thought at CCAG as well, and not the, not the water board, but just regular CCAG. And since it wasn't spelled out, the county council said that they did not.
So I believe it, I believe it is spelled out.
Okay. I read it twice, and I didn't see it, but I could be wrong.
Because we, you know, we appreciate that, how many boards people are on, and the JPA agreement does provide that the alternate can be a staff member, and, you know, if, if the staff member is there representing the city that particular evening, yes, they would have the full voting right.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Dave? All right, at this, at this time, we'll open the public hearing. Would any members of the public like to address us on this item? Mr. Rico?
Robert Rico, Seventh Avenue. I have two questions. Does anybody know what percent of energy PG&E is now supplying that is considered clean energy? And assuming there's thousands of people that opt into their, or stay in this new program and therefore are not in the PG&E program, as PG&E needs to replace infrastructure, that's going to be as much cost spread over fewer people to pay it? So the people that stayed with PG&E potentially are going to see costs go up more proportionally than if everybody stayed with PG&E? Thank you.
Okay.
So Robert, I think you had two questions. First is, you know, what's the, you know, what's the PG&E energy profile look like today? So there's two ways of measuring, measuring the clean energy of a utility. One is this so-called renewable portfolio standard, which is the one you hear about most often. And as you'll remember, the governor has said, "All utilities have to be 50%, have renewables, 50% renewables by 2030." Today, PG&E is about 27%. So when we launch, we'll be at 50%. We'll be at the 2030 standard the day we launch. Another way of looking at cleanliness of the energy production is how much greenhouse gas does the utility produce? PG&E has a much, has a higher score there, and in fact, it's a pretty clean utility because they have, 20% is nuclear energy. So it's not considered renewable, but doesn't emit greenhouse gas. And then large hydroelectric also is not considered renewable, but doesn't emit greenhouse gas. So we'll also exceed them on the greenhouse gas-free standard, but, but not as by, as much. Now, the question you raised about, you know, well, what happens to PG, is there going to be extra cost for PG&E, and how's that affect, you know, ratepayers? So that, that is why there's this so-called exit fee that was discussed earlier by, by the council. So PG&E, you know, has gone out and bought energy and entered in the contracts to provide off San Mateo County. So when, when we launch, you know, PG&E is going to have extra energy that it's procured on our behalf. And then they'll try, what they'll do is they'll mitigate that. They'll sell it. They'll, you know, they'll, you know, put it back on the market. But in the, in the current conditions, you know, their historical contracts, their prices are, are higher than the, than the current marketplace. So they're basically going to have a cost, and that's exactly what that fee is that was discussed earlier. By law, by law, but I'll just finish up. By law, you know, the CPUC and the state, they don't want to leave any of these costs with, with PG&E. So the thing, though, that is, has to be kept in mind is, even when you include that exit fee. exit fee, we can still provide the energy lower than PG&E.
My second question is always covering the cost of infrastructure.
Oh, yeah.
At some point, they're going to have to put in new wires.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
And there will be less people to pay, therefore, they're going to see some kind of recovery by teaching English because they're costing a lot.
Well, remember, you know, on the bill, there's going to be two components. There's the transmission charges will continue to be paid by all of us. So, if you choose to participate in Peninsula Clean Energy, there'll be a transmission charge on your PG&E bill that you'll continue to pay, and then you'll pay Peninsula Clean Energy for the electricity. So, the transmission charge will remain in place for all the customers.
That's where the structure costs.
Yeah, because they, because we obviously want them to have a, you know, a very, a very good and up-to-date transmission network. And the other thing too is, you know, we have to really partner with PG&E here because we're just doing one thing, and they're doing everything else. They're maintaining the lines, they're doing the billing, they're answering the phone calls. Your energy is not ever at risk of being shut off because they're kind of the backstop. And to date, that partnership has been very effective. We've had our first meeting with PG&E about this, and they know how to do this because they've done it in Marin, they've done it in Sonoma, San Francisco's launching in the spring, they've done it in Lancaster. So, they know how to do it. And as I've said a couple of times, I'm glad we're not the first because, you know, there's been plenty of, there's a good track record.
All right, thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to address this on this item? To close the public hearing, you'd be precluded from addressing the council on this item. Okay, any action by the council?
Move to close.
Second.
Motion to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any action by the council at this point in time or discussion? First action item is to.
So, it would be to adopt a resolution.
Okay.
Authorizing the city to join the San Mateo County Peninsula Clean Energy JPA and then appointing a director and an alternate.
Okay. Someone like to introduce that resolution?
I'll introduce that resolution, what he said.
That was Councilmember Ibarra.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
And the vice, the vice mayor has agreed to continue as our, as our member, and Councilmember Rico Medina has agreed to be the alternate. Okay? And then, our next item is to waive the first reading?
Yes, waive first reading and introduce the ordinance.
Okay. Ken?
So moved. To waive the first reading?
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second to waive the first reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
I'll introduce the ordinance. For adoption.
Councilmember Ibarra.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. All right, thank you. Thank you.
[inaudible].
Great, thank you, Dave.